Call us meeting directors. Today is August the ninth, 2021. This is our regular monthly board meeting. We'd like to welcome everyone that has come out to be with us tonight and all those that are watching live. We appreciate the opportunity to represent the county and to welcome each and one of you. As always, we'll start off our meeting with a prayer and a pledge, and we're going to ask Commissioner Walker to do the prayer and Commissioner Allison do the pledge.
Stand.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you, dear Lord, for another day. We thank you for your many blessings, dear Lord. We thank you for the opportunity to come and serve the people in McDowell County in this capacity as a county commissioner. And I just pray, dear Lord, that you would guide us, lead us, and may we make always the best decision that will bring honor and glory to you and that will bring the best benefit to the people we represent. And dear Lord, we just pray as we're right in the middle of a COVID spike and increase, I just pray you'd be with everyone who has COVID. Dear Lord, we just pray you'd touch their bodies and heal them, dear Lord, and give them their strength back. And just thank you for all your many blessings. Thank you for your son, Jesus, who died on the cross for our sins and rose three days later. Dear Lord, and may we always live for you and serve you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Attention. Salute pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Third motion, we approve minutes.
Motion.
Second. Question? All in favor say aye. So here, motion approved the agenda for today. Motion said it. Comments, questions? All in favor say aye. Okay. Under appointments today, first on the list, under item A is a COVID-19 update, and we have our distinguished EMS director, William Keller, here to give us an update on that.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me back to present another COVID-19 update. Today marks 511 days that this community has been battling COVID-19 pandemic. Across the board, all of our metrics are on an upward trend. Our current surge is the second largest surge we have seen since this pandemic began. Rate of spread within our community is concerning. Case counts are increasing. Our COVID-like cases presenting to EMS are increasing. People presenting to emergency departments in the region as well as urgent care clinics are increasing. And we know that deaths are normally a lagged indicator once we see case counts and hospitalizations increase. Today's release, press release noted 75 new positives over the weekend. The 14-day positivity rate is 21.4%, and it is showing no signs of slowing down. Delta variant is more transmissible and is spread at a faster rate. We look at, or we have been looking at this virus through what we call the R knot, or some people know it as the contagion factor. Some of the earlier strains that we dealt with had a contagion factor where every person that was infected, they could infect two to three others. And with the Delta variant, the most latest research that has been released shows that this variant can infect, for one person, can infect up to nine individuals. And that fuels rapid rate of spread. On the testing front, the COVID-19 testing team performed our first drive-through test testing site last week. We had not had a testing site up, I guess, since early spring. An additional drive-through testing site was conducted today, and we have an additional site scheduled for next Monday. There is testing sites available within the community by calling the health department to schedule an appointment, by going to CVS, which this is a free test, as well as the numerous urgent care clinics that are performing, the PCR, as well as the rapid antigen test. We continue to monitor testing capacity within the community very closely, and we'll adjust our operation as needed in conjunction and close coordination with the health department. Our DSS liaison remains embedded within our organization and continues close contact with the home care facilities. We held a coordination call a week and a half ago with these facilities to alert them of the surge that we were seeing within the community. We allowed a question-and-answer session for vaccine and testing and continue the daily coordination with these facilities to ensure we're doing everything possible to mitigate against additional outbreaks in our skilled nursing facilities as well as home care. On the vaccine front, as of today, 42% of McDowell County citizens who are eligible to receive the vaccine have been vaccinated at least partially with one dose. That is 19,185 citizens representing 42% of the population. Fully vaccinated is at 39%. We've seen this number be quite stubborn for many weeks. We have been at 37, 38, 39%. It's been a painful process to see this number increase, but we are starting to see the number of people getting vaccinated. This is starting to pick up steam once again. We have multiple locations for folks to access the vaccine across McDowell County. This week at the health department, we are doing a vaccine clinic from 9:00 till 11:30 on Wednesday, and then on Friday from 12:00 to 2:00. The state has released a limited number of $100 summer cards for anyone receiving the first dose, and $25 cards for a driver who brings someone to get the first dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. We will be giving those out in conjunction with the health department while supplies last, starting on Wednesday. And that was also in our press release that came out today. Other locations that are providing the COVID-19 vaccine outside of our vaccine clinics, in literally seven days a week, that number of these places, you can walk in and receive the vaccine free of charge includes Ingles, Walmart, CVS, Atrium Healthcare, their physician practices, that's formerly known as the CMC system. They're doing a fantastic job at the bedside with physicians, talking to the patients in the ministry room in the Atrium Health Clinics, and then McDowell Family Farms in the A4. Homebound citizens are those who don't have access to transportation, can call the vaccine call center, and an appointment will be scheduled with the community paramedic to deliver that vaccine to the homebound citizen. And we'll also follow that up with a second shot appointment to ensure no one is left behind here. We did transition the vaccine hotline and the information center to seven days a week versus five days a week that started, that will start this week, and will now run on Saturday and Sunday from 8:30 to 5:00. Our community outreach continues. We have partnered with numerous agencies in this community to make sure that vaccines are available regardless of what community you live in. The next two weeks, our team is scheduled to let on outreach events. A number of these are at industrial sites to make vaccines accessible to the workers. We've also heavily partnered with the Latinx community, the West Marion Forum. We were out at the Carson House, or our team was, for one of the last meetings. We remain dedicated and focused to ensure everyone in this community has access to the COVID-19 vaccine. I've got the metrics with me. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. As I stated at the beginning, this is the second largest surge we have seen so far. We have seen COVID-19 cases increase with every holiday that we have went through. This surge after the Fourth of July has surpassed the surge that we saw in 2020 in July. And without a decrease in the next week or two, we're going to be knocking on the door to our post-holiday surge that we've seen Thanksgiving and Christmas, which was a very difficult time for this community. We know what the data shows us. We surge after holidays. What is different now is we have a variant that is much more contagious and transmissible. And I think this is our warning to what could potentially come in the winter months if we do not get our vaccination rate up. Our top objective is to push vaccines and try to get the vaccination rate up in this community. I urge people, get your information from reliable sources. Have that discussion with your physician. Have that discussion with a trusted healthcare professional. Rely on accurate information. There's plenty of bad information that continues to make this pandemic very difficult for us to recover, and we have to move this forward. And we have to change the direction that we're going, where the winter months are going to be very difficult for us. And with that, I'll take any questions that you have. I will say, the health department team, as well as our team, 511 days in, there's lots of tired eyes out there. But people, I mean, even today at the testing site, they're laser-focused, and they continue to work diligently. They worked throughout the weekend, but unfortunately, this is the position we find ourselves in once again.
William, for clarification purposes, so the $100 first-dose cards, anybody that's going to be watching this needs to understand, if you've already had the dose, you're not supposed to run down there the first dose. And you're, say, a fully vaccinated person is not supposed to go showing up down there expecting to get a $100 card, right?
There's a check.
These are new.
Yeah, there's a check and balance system to ensure people aren't given a third and a fourth vaccine just so they can receive a card. You have to be 18 years of age and older, has to be the first dose, and there will be a system in place to ensure that that doesn't happen.
But that is good that the state is doing that. Now, some people are motivated by money, and $100 is a lot of money. Some people, and they'll go do it.
Give us a little update, William, on whether there is one or not, a booster or anything. Is there anything going on in that period?
There's no official guidance or direction out on boosters. We know that that's being looked at very closely. I can tell you, our team internally, from a planning standpoint, if that is released from an official capacity, we will be ready, along with the health department. But at this time, there is no official guidance from the CDC on a booster shot for J.J. Pfizer or Moderna. But I do know from news media reports, it is being looked at very closely by the CDC.
Is there a recommendation as far as vitamins? You know, you hear a lot about vitamin D, and you hear about zinc. Is that beneficial to people?
I'm not in the capacity to speak to that. I would defer people to their personal physician for that specific guidance.
Do you have a question?
Do you foresee the EOC becoming operational?
It's a really great question, and I think that if we continue on the path, the answer to that is yes. My hope is, is that we see the brakes applied to this rapid rate of increase that we're seeing. But if it is not, it will require another EOC activation to ensure that we have close coordination of all agencies to manage what we're seeing. It was all hands on deck during the winter with the surge that we saw, but it's something that we are watching very closely.
I would just, from my own experience, I would encourage people to get the shot. When you're lying in a hospital in what would seem to be, in what would seem to be your deathbed, it gives you a different perspective on this thing, and it can be a killer. And so I would certainly encourage people to get the shot.
I've been vaccinated. People ask me, have you actually had the vaccine? I've been vaccinated, both instances of Moderna. I done my research. I talked to my physician. I made an informed decision. It is a personal choice, but I do believe in getting factual information from trusted sources. And I made a determination. I did it for my family. I did it for my friends. I done it for my community, and then I did it to protect myself.
Any other questions coming? Thank you very much, David.
Thanks.
Next on appointments, item B, tax collection and tag office items. We have Ms. Linda Onifre here tonight with us. Linda, you're doing a great job. Quickly, where are we at percentage-wise on collections?
Right now?
Right now.
14.7.
But we finished out, we finished out in the year at, what, 99?
0.4.
99.9?
Yes, yes, yes. 99.46, we're in collection of fiscal year 2041.
And Linda, as the chairman's alluding to, that's an improvement from the previous year by 0.38.
Yep, it is. We did 99.11 last year, and we increased it to 99.46, and with the ending balance of 131,701 at June 30th.
And our base of how much?
23 million.
There you go.
Yeah.
So pretty impressive. Just one month away, you're at over 14%, which is really good.
Yeah. So, yeah, we, everybody, all but two districts were lower than 99% in the collections, and our delinquent collections was 284,005 this year, which was an increase of 145,552 from last fiscal year. And our budget amount for delinquents is 112,929, so we almost pretty much doubled that plus some, so we, in the delinquent year taxes. So, I started to, it's even so.
I took the end of it, I think.
That's okay. So I do have, also, I left it. Sorry. Here is a, the unpaid taxes at the end of fiscal year, June 30th, for your inspection of the 131,701 balance. And any questions about your package and the settlement?
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the tax settlement and order of collection. As presented.
Motion.
Second.
That's second, need discussion?
I just state, we got the best tax claim from State of Carolina.
Yes, we have.
And I'll agree with that.
And it's all my staff. I have to say that it's, this staff is who, you know, they always say, your leader is who makes a great, you know, staff. It's the other way around. I think it's the staff that has made me as good as I am. They are, I'm very happy with the staff I have now.
I have to confess, it's kind of like me paying my county taxes, it's kind of like pulling teeth. It's hard to do, but I know I have to do it.
It's not that bad. Okay, so settlement approved and order of collections.
Okay, we have a motion to second on that. Need discussion? All in favor say aye.
All right. For part two, I would like to introduce to everyone my tag office manager, Bethany Carter. She's going to, she's here to talk to you guys about what she knows best. She's been doing this for 24-plus years, running the tag office, working with Raleigh and so forth, with the vehicle services. So she has approached me a few months back and is looking to see if we can provide more services for the citizens and to generate a little bit more revenue for the tag office. And so there's a couple of things, I think we gave you in the package ahead of time, that we could do that still runs through Raleigh, but it would, so all the audit and so forth like that, it would still be through Raleigh, but it's just services in our tag office. So I'll let her tell you about the two new things that we'd like to possibly start.
Welcome, Becky.
Thank you. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and present these new services that we want to offer to our county. The four hire plates is like for all of our car haulers and Vex and UPS and anything that has to do with vehicle services for customers. We would just offer a plate form. It's all the difference. We have a box of plates. Raleigh will furnish all the plates, and then we'll get the revenue of the commission off of it. It also includes a tractor-trailer, is the international registration plan, where we can help our customers that drop tractor-trailers all through the year so they don't have to go to Charlotte or Raleigh constantly. I'm also checking into doing the wildlife services, like hunting and fishing license and registration. And I got some videos about that today, but that's still on hold. I want to get this first, with what we're doing through Raleigh, where they furnish our inventory and compensate us for our services.
So we still get notary, any notary fees, of course, would be applied for the county and our portion of the services and revenue.
Is there any questions about the four hire or hire fee services?
Ms. Chairman, I make a statement that I appreciate them being proactive and bringing to the board opportunities for our citizens, that way there are more options, that they can come here, saving them, as you said, driving to Charlotte. And I think it's great. I think you're doing an outstanding job on providing more opportunities, and I'm totally in favor of it.
And we have, we've had requests for several times for this. With her, she's already been doing this for several years, and she's already trained. She can train the staff, the rest of the staff. But, you know, when somebody's coming there and they've got a hauler, then they're coming to do the regular tag, but then they got to turn around and go to Charlotte. So they can still do everything in Charlotte, and then we're actually losing the revenue for that regular tag too. So this does, it will be very helpful for the citizens.
I like that. I'm excited about that, even more so excited about the next thing you're going to talk about.
The hunting and fishing wildlife? Yeah, we're going to come back on that, this part, start legal and see how it progresses.
Yeah, with the wildlife, there's a little bit more involved. It would be more, it would be us.
We'd have to.
Yeah, and it's kind of separate from Raleigh, and so then all auditors would be involved, Allison would be involved. Everything is just a lot more involved with doing the wildlife than it is just the other two services.
There are a lot of scoresmen in McDowell County, and so that will really please a lot of people.
The compensation is so much greater than the wildlife.
Yeah, there's a lot more research and so forth, more discussion with Ashley and Allison we need to do to make sure that we're all good.
Maybe a suggestion, if you approve the DMV items and a directed staff to, I don't know if there's a meeting, wildlife or whatever, come back next month?
Would that be enough time?
Or two months? Isn't two months better?
I think we can have it within, for the next meeting, if we're good with finances and child support.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion, we allow staff to proceed with the recommendation given us just now by our county manager, Mr. Wooten.
Motion seconded. In discussion. All in favor say aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Next on the agenda is transit update. I will see Jason Alte, he's here. Welcome, Jason.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I would like to give you some updates on what we have going on, and then at the end, I do have some policies that I need to discuss. I get it very. We're taking all the strides we can to get our transit department where it needs to be. It's a slow process, but I feel that we're making sure that it's going in the right direction. Just from a numbers point of view, April and May, we averaged 1,751 rides. June and July, we had an average of 1,872 rides. So our numbers are increasing. At this point, we are still short three vans, which we are working diligently on. Unfortunately, we're at the mercy of Ford Motor Company and all of the supply shortages. Hopefully, I got an update today, hopefully we'll see those vans come in sometime in September. We have hired three new part-time drivers that are in training now. I would like to stress, though, the drivers and the three vans will only get us where we need to be. This is not an attempt to expand anything. This is just an attempt to get us where we need to be as far as the vans that we need and the drivers that we need. Of course, in the future, we will be looking to expand services. We were able to replace one of the red vans with a new, it was a demonstration model for transit that took no shortage of working with DOT. We intend to approve that. That was here about a month ago. I think you guys should have a picture of that new van on your laptops. I'm proud of that. It looks good, and I think it's representing what we can do, what we can accomplish with our vans. Speaking of vans, we did have to re-letter entirely. They were not lettered correctly, and they were not up to code, so we did have to do that. I think also you have a picture in your, you write off that one of the older vans had to be re-lettered. Something I'm very proud of, we were able to outfit all of the vans with cameras. Cameras are not a requirement, but I personally would not want to drive a van with passengers if we didn't have cameras on the van. Cameras protect the driver, the cameras protect the county. If there's an accident, if there's an incident, there's no question as far as what happened or who said what. These are Seon cameras, which I'm pretty pleased with those. I'm familiar with those. If we can adjust the volume, if there's some history going on in the back that law enforcement needs to know about, we would be able to adjust the volume specifically to a certain part of the van. The cameras are outfitted, so the entire van, interior van is covered, including the stairs and wheelchair lift. And we also have a view directly out the front of the van, so we can see what the driver is seeing as they go down the road. We did put new bloodwork pathogen kits on the vans. That's something else that we need to do to bring them up to code. We have got those on the board. Also, some of the interior signage on the vans was outdated and needed to be replaced, so we have done that as well. And I don't, I foresee that having flexi blade shields in the vans will be mandated probably sooner rather than later. And to that end, Terry and his guys came up with a design, and we are happy to put in the vans. You should have a picture of one of those shields. Well, I think they look really good, and my hat's off to those guys for making that happen. So as we can, that will be something that will be placed in all vans. Something else that I'm proud of, a week ago Friday, we did take part in a five-county training rodeo, which encompasses a driving course for the drivers, and also about 80% of our annual training is, was taken care of at that time. We had three McDowell County drivers placed in the top 10, which I think is great, considering those guys have never been there before out of 60 total drivers or so. My hat's off to my guys. They did a very good job. They had a lot of fun with it. And I believe also there's a picture of a couple of vans in the obstacle course on We did also decide to go ahead and get new jackets and vests for all the drivers. We probably sort of had a hodgepodge of different things out there. So now our uniforms will be uniform. If you see the drivers out, they all have new jackets as well as raincoats and winter coats. I think that's important, that we look, we look professional. One thing I did want to touch on, the Medicaid transition over into managed care, which was official July 1st. It's really been a struggle, not just for us, but for every county that I've been in contact with. It's just, it's just not working. This was unfortunately something that had a long time to be planned for, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure where the blame will lie on that. But it's not just McDowell County that finds themselves in this position. We've had multiple, multiple webinars, multiple phone calls, a lot of emails, went back and forth. Mitchell County, Gansville County, Adrian County are all in the same position. How this works, there's a third-party brokerage system that we're supposed to receive the rides as opposed to the way that now we get a Medicaid right from the ESS and we look at rides. There's a third-party system that they implemented and we're just not getting the rides now. I want to be clear, it's not really hurt us yet numbers-wise. Our numbers are actually up, but it's something that we're working diligently on, trying to get the information we need. The first ride we got, they were asking us to go to Goldenboro. So it's, it's really just been a frustration to all the transit agencies, not just us. We are getting, I think we've gotten two local rides at this point. So hopefully, hopefully that is something that will be rectified. There's really not a lot we can do other than just stay on top of things and sending emails. And again, it's not just McDowell County that's in this situation. It's every county that I'm familiar with. It's very frustrating that a month in and you still don't even have your login information. The NCPTA, the Public Transit Association, they're working very hard on this. We had a webinar last week. We're having another one tomorrow to kind of bring us up to speed on what's going on. And at this point, we're just trying to be diligent, trying to stay on top of things. And hopefully, everything will be functioning smoothly before it, for effects of the bottom line. So we are very aware of that situation and doing all that we can to, to expel it. But unfortunately, it's a situation similar to the vans we're waiting on. There's just not a lot that we can do at this point. Before I get into the policies, are there any questions on anything?
Jason, who's, who do you think is picking those riders up? If you've got less than five riders, who's picking those Medicaid transportation riders up?
In my contacts and the talking with DSS, I'm only aware of one that we have not. That, now that could be inaccurate, but I know there's a company out of Asheville that's called Out and About Ability. I don't know. There were four, including us, there were four that got approved for transportation in McDowell County. Unfortunately, I'm not creepy to that, who they are. But at this point, I don't know. But in talking with DSS, they're working, they're working closely with us on this matter. I only know of one ride that was actually completed through the brokerage system at this point. And as I say, our numbers, we're, I'm checking the numbers every day. I'm not seeing a drop in our Medicaid numbers. If anything, they're up. They do have a choice at a certain point that they can say, no, I want to go with McDowell or I want to go with the outside individuals. So at this point, it's not hurting us.
I'd just like to say thank you for the jackets. I do think that that will help somewhat around because they look pretty short. And I do appreciate taking care of the vehicles when you get them. But that's, that's a good job. I appreciate it.
And the cameras were an excellent idea.
Yep.
Excellent.
I think you have really brought some good, interesting ideas to the county. We appreciate your hard work, Jason.
Thank you very much. We intend to keep the momentum going, but thank you. Policies? Yes. We did have a proficiency review back in June, which overall, we did really well on that. We did have some things come out of that, though, that I need to bring to your attention. And should I just present these one at a time or just?
Maybe if you kind of listed them out, say, had a summary of them.
The first item that we need to discuss is our SSP, which is the System Safety Plan, which is a pretty extensive document. It's in six sections. There was a lot of outdated information in that, a lot of incorrect names. The meat of the policy is still the same. There were just a lot of, so what we elected to do was just redo the whole thing instead of going through and trying to take out this name and put in that name, this address and that address, and the entire policy had been, had been redone. Secondly, we did redo our drug and alcohol policy. The drug and alcohol policy is a standalone policy, but it is also incorporated into the SSP. DOT is now testing for a lot of drugs that they weren't testing for a few years ago. So the major change to that policy was just to list the drugs that are now part of the federal DOT drug screen. Also, we did change drug testing sites, so that was also amended in that, that policy. The third item is the reduction of service, which obviously we don't plan for reduced service, but DOT is requiring that we have a policy in place if we ever do need to reduce service. That's the third item for your approval. And the fourth item is a grant authorization form that just gives me the approval to submit the grants once they've been more approved.
Mr. Chairman, can I make sure we approve the four items that we just brought to our attention?
Good move. Second, good discussion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Very well. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Next on route to D, we have economic development grant, and we have Mr. Chuck Abernathy here to present that to us. And we'll, Chuck, come on up.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I wanted to try to talk a little louder. There's some noise and people in the back room. Can you guys hear? Seems like every time I come, Terry DePoistre and Linda Onyefrey are on the agenda right before me. So maybe that's.
We planned it that way.
Maybe that's a good sign. I've got two items to be here. I'll do a brief update on a couple of others. And as always, I appreciate the job you guys, you guys do. In the way of updates, you had a public hearing about three months ago where you transferred two and a half acres of property in the industrial park on a project that is a North Carolina company that employs 45 people and is going to add about 50. And this, we have got some community college money that has been, will be allocated along with a grant for $65,000s to get water and sewer to that property. And we expect the state to make an announcement within about a week. So that's, it sends that time and they ultimately, and hopefully they happen. Triple Lot Design is the other one that, along with Tool Craft, Triple Lot Design is in Old Ford. And there is a building reuse grant that they are starting to draw down. And I believe they've got about 12 or 13 employees hired. And so they're in operation and that's, that's happening. If you ever have questions or want an update from me, I try not to bother you, but if you ever, you ever do, you're welcome to, you've got my cell number, you're welcome to call. So why I'm here really is, the first one is, to my mind, is to have you thinking about how you want to approach something, which is always the best way to do it with elected boards. You throw something out and you give people, people an opportunity to kind of, kind of think through it. And it concerns the housing project on the north side of College Drive, which this board has approved some time ago. And that is 165 units of what's called workforce housing that will be, that will be constructed. It did go to bid and the bids were very much over budget. And so they're back at the drawing board and Neil Burney will be giving you, giving you an update. It was substantially over, over budget to the point that they had to, had to back it up. He assured me and asked Ashley and me to assure you that they're intended still to, still to do it, that costs were coming down a little bit. And they're looking at other, other cost savings, which gets to the reason why I'm here. And it really shouldn't, to my mind, have been a question. In other words, we should have kind of anticipated this and addressed it. And that is a substantial fill to move off of the housing site somewhere. And they priced it moving it off-site, which is not what needs to happen at all. The soil needs to be placed on the south side of College Drive where we can create a graded site and have property to market. He estimates 200,000 cubic yards of soil and the savings is $4 a foot or well over $800,000 to receive that soil on, on our, or city property. And so that just seems, one, you're helping the housing project and two, you're, you're creating a graded site. Now, we need to talk about what goes into creating a graded site. And that's where Ashley and you guys and Neil and us and whoever needs to, we're not there yet. We don't have all of, all of the pieces to this, but we need to be thinking about, about what we, what we want to do. And there's a lot of coordination on this project, a lot of movement parts, which means the communication needs to be really good. You've got a water and sewer grant. That water and sewer grant needs to be coordinated with the ARC grant, which is right under, right under a million dollars, which needs to be coordinated at least technically with the, with the moving of the soil from one side to the other, which needs to be coordinated with the idea that the over-road innovation drive would have excess soil that would also be used. So you may have some dollars, maybe not, but, but you may have some dollars within, within that, within those two road projects to do some, some site work. So there's really, it's really kind of, kind of complicated. Also, it's on city, the bulk of it, to my mind, is on city progress where the, where the soil will, will be deposited. And so you need at least a good, healthy discussion and maybe some kind of an agreement, which is really what, what you probably ought to do. To say, you know, someone's going to upgrade substantially that property and you need to, moving forward, have some, have some understanding of how that will work. I never ask people to trust me, but, but if you will on one thing, if you don't have buildings and you don't have shovel-ready sites, you are left out of numerous opportunities for economic development to, to occur. Our buildings are extremely limited and our graded site is the one that I just mentioned, which is maybe sufficient now for maybe 25,000 square feet. And that's all. The graded site, and this is completely, well, it's not completely, I guess, it's got, it's got some substance behind it. But what, what I would hope we end up with is a 100,000 square foot pack right out here on this, on this property. If we have that, then it opens up all kinds of opportunities for us. So you need to be thinking, what's the role with the city? You need to be thinking, is it appropriate to ask the housing project maybe to put some money into this off the savings? How much might we have off the roads to go into this? And none of that is answered, but you, you can be kind of toying with it and thinking about it. Do you have questions?
Chuck, isn't there a, isn't there a pretty big valley on the city end of the property that could handle a lot of this?
And that's where we're at.
Okay.
In other words, innovation drive at the top, up by the pond, has excess soil. And so that excess soil will go to that property you just said. Now, the housing project, and they're doing soil borings on that property this next week. So they are moving and they're spending money. And so there's no at all criticism of what they're, of what they're doing. It bothers me that I didn't, you know, we didn't have the thought of taking that excess soil right out of the gate and using it in this, in this town. And I don't know that I realized it was that much. That's a lot of soil. So questions?
I'd like to make a motion to instruct staff to get in touch with the city manager so that there can be a game plan for getting sites ready for construction, for the, in tune with what's being said right here as far as the property is discussed. But.
And that's to you, you're talking about some type of agreement that would, that's sort of gathering or?
So that the city, the county, and economic development can be tied in together so that everybody's clear on what scope of work is going, need to take place.
I'll make, I'll save the motion.
And I would go to motion and instruct discussion. What's the pleasure, board? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, great. Second reason I'm here is a grant that we submitted to USDA. And the grant was awarded, we submitted it probably back in January or February. It was postponed and then we, we received notice. $37,500 grant with a, with a $12,500 match. Very excited about, about this. And I'm passing a book around that is in a county that has already gone through this process, Guilford County, which is Greensboro and High Point. And what the engineering company does using, using GIS is they identify every 50 and every plus acre site and every 100 acre site plus that is in existence in your, in your county, regardless of any criteria, it could be straight up and down or underwater or in a flood plain. They start off identifying every one. And then they go through about 12 different variables where they basically weed sites out due to distance from utilities, the slope, flood plain, soils, zoning, et cetera, national forests, all kinds of things that would cause you to say, that's not a suitable place for, for development. So they basically come up with, with an assessment of sites that maybe have not been looked at previously. I'll give you an example. The teat site behind your EMS station, we know all about it. There's not a reason in the world to look at that site. It's, it's been studied, it's got maps, it's people, you know, we, we understand it. There's other areas of the county that we've, we've not really taken a hard look at and that might warrant, you know, this, this kind of, this kind of assessment. What they, what the study then does after going through this is they take six sites that are chosen. And if you would, think about how, how that might happen, how, how we go about identifying six sites. And they will drill down on those sites and give you what the, what the cost to develop those sites are, what the cost to bring water and sewer to the site would be, what the transportation issues are. Basically, taking those sites and then putting footprints and buildings and pads on those sites so that you're prepared and you know. See, we did this on some of our sites, like the Universal site. We've got different buildings that have been situated on the, on the site so that we can show people what the, what the site would look like developed. Well, this would do that for six sites. So, so think through the importance, and I don't want to say a negative word, but, but think through the care that you have to use deciding where those six sites are. Where is your growth going to be? Where is the development going to occur? And, you know, what just jumps out at me is that the town of Old Ford probably needs to have a couple of, a couple of locations. The town of, or city of Marion needs the same thing. They both control the utility. They both control the utilities or, you know, sewer, shore. And then you might have a couple of sites that, you know, that you would work with those two entities on, but also have some sites reserved in other areas. So how those sites are chosen and where they end up is real important. The second thing related to this is the sites don't have to be manufacturing sites. It could be housing.
School.
Could be a school. Could be, you know, something else that the community needs to fresh out and come up with a location. So you guys may know of Mr. LSU's schools as an example, of the school system looking at particular locations for a particular district. And this process would evaluate different sites and come up with specific costs on them. So it's really exciting. There are some areas that I can't wait to see how they turn out because I've always been curious if they're good areas or not. Anyways, so we need to think through, or you need to think through, what kind of process do you want to just let us run with it and come up with six sites and touch base back with you, or you want the utility committee? You know, how do you want to process it? And how do you want to share in the cost? I had told Ashley that when he asked if NIDA had dollars to put into it, that I thought we did, and that we should have put some into it. And he texted me a little while ago and said that maybe one of the municipalities... I won't say it if it's not ready yet. You might have a municipality ready to put a little bit in. And there may be... I talked to the other municipality, and there may be some interest on their part as well. So kind of shaving that cost in a way that has you paying for that. Timetable will be fairly quick. It'll take place within this fiscal year. So you have questions? It's kind of hard to explain this.
It's data. It's full of data that's very beneficial. I think that you could also have topo, you could also have... I mean, in the area, you could have everything as far as electrical, sewer, water, all of it. You know, it's going to be very beneficial. I do think we need to kind of instruct in the manager to figure out exactly what our share should be and then make a recommendation for us.
Yeah. You mentioned Ford, well, you mentioned the county, the city, the town of Old Ford, and the school system. And we're getting, how many sites?
I don't know about the school, but maybe... Old Ford and the city of Marion. Right. Yeah, I think the school system will be out of... It's just for planning purposes, as far as it will give you the 50 acres or 100 acres, whatever's required of someone looking to purchase a property. And as far as economic development, it is a win-win for us to have this data. And I think that, I think we really want to pursue this. The grant, 32-5, I think what our share would be, our share being, the commissioners, Old Ford and Marion would be 12,000.
And me.
And me. Okay.
I think we should put a little bit in.
Thirty-one hundred each, yeah.
Right. So with that being said, if you could make a recommendation, you know, sometime in the future, then we should be good to go there.
My part. Real quick.
What do you want?
As well.
A quarter of it?
Yes. What do you think?
I think, yeah, you're right. I think both of you are spot on.
County manager.
You're good with that?
I think as far as our percentage, the county not including NIDA, probably should be higher than municipalities based on just the sheer amount of land.
Because acreage out of the...
I would agree with that.
What would you rate the man, Mr. Lee?
I think if the county did half of the 12,000, about 6,000, and then have the other three make it.
I'd make a motion to use the $6,000 for the county's purposes and then for, Chuck, if you don't mind.
I think NIDA will do two or three.
To get with the city, to city and town, and go from there, and y'all can split the rest. But 6,000.
Seven.
Can I say one quick word?
Yes, sir.
I promise. The document lives and varies, doesn't go on the shelf. If you wanted to add a seventh or an eighth site for... If my memory's right, I didn't look at it. $1,500 is what my memory is, is you can add more sites to it. You can, if, let's say, somebody wanted to locate near Little Switzer, and that wasn't one of your sites, you can pull the thing back up again and then look at sites up there that you didn't drill down on.
I think this ought to, Patrick, go to the education committee, because the school system's next school they have to replace is going to be Marion, Metro. And that has to be within the city limits on the southern side. So maybe get some input from them to get suggestions.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. I want to favor say aye.
Thank you. That's good.
Great, brother Chuck. Thank you. Appreciate you guys.
Next on the agenda, we have Mr. Michael Tank here with us tonight. He's going to give us a Charter broadband update, and we welcome him tonight.
Well, good afternoon. Good, my name is Mike Tank. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for Charter Communications. And I kind of always lead off with this little piece of information, is that you'll get confused between Charter and Spectrum. So I always want to kind of clear that up at the very beginning. Charter is the parent company, Spectrum is the products we sell. So analogy I use is Procter and Gamble sells Crest toothpaste, Charter sells Spectrum products. So you can almost use interchangeably, but Charter is the company and Spectrum is the product. So what I'm here to talk to you about this evening is to give you an update on a couple of things that's going on in the broadband world that we're working with the county on. Before I jump into that, I had given a packet of information to you. So let me just kind of run through real quick what's in that packet. On the right-hand side of the packet is information about the ARDOF, the Rural Development Opportunity Fund. And I'm going to be getting more into that in the slides. And there's just, in there is a copy of the PowerPoint that I'm going to be using, a map of the impact of ARDOF across the country, a press release, a blog about it. And then this is kind of interesting. This is a listing of various websites that you go to to learn more about ARDOF, especially some of the, where it says SEC map and CNS maps. You can go in there and drill down to exact addresses to see if it's covered in ARDOF or not. Now, it'll make a little more sense once I open the presentation. Then on the other side is just a little more general information about Charter. And just recently, in July, US News and World Report did a study and came out and talked about best internet provider in rural areas. We're very proud that Spectrum was listed as their number one article. So I gave you an article. This is excerpts of their piece, but the websites there, if you want to go through the whole thing. And then the next couple of pieces are just information again about Charter Spectrum in North Carolina and across the country, and our fiscal impact that we have, the number of employees, and so on like that. And then the last piece in there is a piece that talks about Spectrum Internet Assist. This is a flyer for anybody that's in our existing footprint. And we know that sometimes folks can't always afford different things. What this is, this is a low-cost internet program that we offer for families that have a student that's on career reduced lunch, or a senior who's on SSI. And so they can get 30x free internet service for $17.99 a month. So just wanted to put that in there for your awareness. So with that, let me just kind of jump into this presentation. Do I have a... Thanksy. I've not done one of these before, so this is kind of exciting. So Charter, we're going to talk this evening about the ARDOF presentation. We're going to talk about the awards of ARDOF in McDowell County. We're going to talk about NTIA, National Telecommunication Infrastructure Administration. They have a grant that we're looking to partner the county with, and then other opportunities for partnership. So first, in North Carolina, we won... Let me back up a step. Let me explain what ARDOF is. ARDOF is something that was part of the FCC, and they knew that expanding broadband into rural areas is very important. And so what they came up with is a program to help offset some of the costs. Because you go into the rural areas of building broadband where there's low-density areas, it's expensive to do, and the economics just on its own, we're not there. So the government is trying to help offset those with some grants. So the way they started, and when we talk about this, we're talking about ARDOF one, because we anticipate there's going to be a second round of ARDOF grants and programs. So what they did is they looked at all of the counties across the country and looked at census blocks. So the counties broke down the census blocks, and if they had anybody in that census block that had broadband, that census block was ineligible. And according to the FCC, broadband is 25x3. Now, we know that's not a great definition, but that's what it is right now with the federal government, so that's what we've got to use. So all of the census blocks that had no broadband at all by any provider that met the 25x3 were eligible for ARDOF. So what our company did is we went through across the nation and looked to see what census blocks were not involved or were eligible for ARDOF. So we did a lot of work, and we had a team, both in Washington and our engineering team, to go back and look at the, these areas. They did design work, and they came up with a desktop way of looking at all these things and put together numbers. And then we made a bid to the FCC. The way the FCC did their program is through a reverse auction. So what that reverse auction is, and let's say we're looking at this one census block that's got 100 homes, or I'm just making these numbers up more for example purposes. And let's say it's going to cost $100 to build this one area. So we, so another company comes in and says, we need $60 of federal fund, and we will contribute $40 to build that area. And then Charter Spectrum would come in and say, well, we will contribute 50, but we only need 50 from the government. So we would win that because we're asking for the least amount of money from the government. So that's how that reverse auction was. So what happened is, we won a lot across the country. We are making a $5 billion with a B, investment in rural infrastructure across the country. We're going to get 1.2 billion offset from the federal funds. So you can see how much money that Charter is putting in, and that's for over a million homes across the country. Now, here in North Carolina, if you look on this map, the existing footprint that we have in Charter is in the dark blue areas. The Charter, ARDOF areas that we won is in the green. So you can see how impactful that's going to be across the state. And we'll get to McDowell County here in a minute. But we won 128,509 locations across the state and 7.2 million offsets to some of the... So in looking at McDowell County, this is a map that you can pull up on some of those lakes I was talking about. You can pull these maps up. These are all on the federal site and so on. But if you look at this map, the colored areas are the ARDOF awards that were won. In the navy blue, it's the Charter ARDOF area, and in the purple, it's SpaceX. So there's also a little question whether they're still going to be able to win this because of them being a satellite provider as opposed to hardline provider, but that's a topic for a different conversation. But, so what we're interested in talking about is this blue area. So what we did is we made these, we won the reverse auction for these areas, and in this, we are going to be providing 2,659 locations. Now, these locations were come up, the numbers came up with through these desktop GIs and looking at census blocks. We did this via desktop. We have not walked this area out, so we haven't walked up every down, up and down line. And we have been starting, we have already been starting to do this, but we've been finding that there are some differences between the physical walkout and what was according to FCC and Census Bureau data and so on. But, so when all's comes and done, it may not be that exact number, but it's in that ballpark. So we know that we are going to be providing broadband service to the area in the navy blue areas. So we're pretty excited about that. So before I move on, well, one other thing, I'm sure the question is, what's the timeline going to be on this? So according to the ARDOF area, this is a six-year program across the country, and we have to do this in six years. What Charter has done, since we've got this, all these people that are, I mean, all these areas across the country serving over 100 or a million different homes, we hired, we created a brand-new department. It's called our ARDOF Department. We're hiring 2,000 people for this, and we're setting it up by regions. So the ARDOF Department that's going to be covering this area is based in Charlotte, I'm based in Charlotte. So fortunately, I already know these people that are doing this. It's not going to be a learning curve. These folks are guys that have been working for our company for a long time. They're stepping up, and now we're going to be doing this. So they already have relationships with the NC DOT. They know the power companies, they know the business of building the cable. So there's not going to be a learning curve. But we do know that going back to... I like this question, maybe go back a little bit. Go back and seeing how much of the green areas that we're going to have to build, there's going to be a lot of work being done. So we have six years to get all that done. We anticipate and hoping to get it done much sooner than that. But we do have, there are benchmarks along the way. So we have to have 40% done by year three, I believe, and then there's stair steps in between through year six. Now, exactly the order in which areas are going to happen, I don't know, but I know that they've divided it into different segments so that it's not just going to be starting the long way and blending one way, or going this way or that way. There's going to be different people doing different things in different areas. So that's a long way to say, I don't know what the timeline actually is going to be. We're working on that, we're doing the walkout, we're doing the design, and we're putting a calendar together. But we know that we have a six-year timeline. We're certainly going to meet that, but we anticipate meeting that as well. So before I move on past ARDOF, let me just pause and see if there's any questions.
So I've got one.
Sure.
I understand the blue is the ARDOF charter expansion.
Right.
Navy blue. Now, on your map, so just to help me make sure I'm clear.
Sure.
Now, where it says Marion, so how much of that area that is not in blue, one already has broadband right at the center of your map? Do you have a slide that shows that?
I do not. Be honest with you, that's somewhat proprietary information. We have a hard time getting that out, so would any of our competitors. But general area, most of the populated area already has service. Now, when we get into NTIA conversation here in a few minutes, it may become a little more clear, and we'll address that point with you.
And to the west upper part, a lot of it is forest surplus land, right?
Right.
Okay.
I can just make a little statement. I do know that the county, for the schools, for example, 40% of students that go to McDowell County schools do not have broadband. 40%. You are correct. Marion and Old Ford have things, but when you get out of town just a little bit, then it goes pretty bad.
Correct.
The, how was the 2659, how was that fixed? Because it seems to me there is a lot more property in McDowell County that's not being serviced.
Okay. I'll answer that question, and then you just gave me the perfect lead-in to get into the next section.
That's good.
So what the 2659 came from is if you remember, I talked about the eligible census blocks that could get it, that had no broadband. Now, we know that there were a lot of census blocks that maybe were right next to it, that out of that 100 people that were there... out of that 100 people that were there, maybe four of them had broadband, so 96 didn't. Well, they were not eligible for the ARDOF program. So we could only bid on the census blocks that had zero broadband in it. And so the census blocks that we won in McDowell County, when you add up the number of homes in those census blocks that we could win, add it up at 2659.
Correct.
Okay. So now, moving beyond that, because we know that there are adjacent areas that need broadband as well.
Correct.
So that leads us into the NTIA or National Telecommunication Infrastructure. Again, this is another federal grant that's coming out through NTIA. It's a fund of $288 million. It's targeting to counties with less than 50,000, if you guys follow that category, portions of the county, the census blocks not currently served by 25 by three. So we're looking to partner with the county and I think that you guys already passed a motion to allow us to work with your county manager, Mr. Mooton, and we've been working on that diligently over the last several weeks to get this all pulled together. There is going to be no financial participation from the county. Your level of participation is, the grant has to be filed by a governmental entity. So we're partnering with you and your role is to make the application. We are providing all the data, we are putting together the application, we're giving you the package and having the county make the submission. And what we're trying to do is leverage the areas outside of the ARDOF awards that Charter already already won with the NTIA information. So hopefully we can cover more service area. Now, at this point in time, I do want to say that we do have a non-disclosure agreement with the county because some of this information, I am going to be sharing with you, even though I know it's public information and probably or written on the public forum and it's going to be on the on your television. This is still confidential information and so you'll notice that the next slide is not in your package. So I apologize for that, but I wanted to try and explain why that's the case. So this next slide is the new map. So what we did is we took on the same one with the ARDOF of the blue and the purple, but what we did is we went and had our GIS team go back and look at the maps. And so then we went and looked at the map and we took the county and basically said, where is our existing footprint? We pulled it out. Where is anybody else's that has the 25 by three footprint, any other competitors? Pulled that out. We also went and pulled the blue and the purple areas out. So what's left is an internal term that we use is called white space. It's the stuff that's still available to be served. And so then we took those white spaces, cross-referenced them with the census data, Census Bureau data, to see where are the locations in those white space census blocks that don't have service. That we, and each of these little red dots that you see all around here, all represent a home or a cluster of homes. So what we found is that right now under ARDOF is 2659, we find that there are another 2,519 homes and these are the homes that you were talking about that that also need service for a grand total of 5,178 homes. So that's what we're looking to build in moving forward. Let me get back to my notes here. So under the NTIA, again, we're looking to go for the 2,519 additional homes. For us, through our calculations, it's about another 200 miles of fiber that we're going to be building at a cost of about $8.5 million to get to those 2,500 homes. Now, this, one thing I guess I feel to say is when we when we go to these, build to the ARDOF area and we're building to the NTIA area, if we win the grant, it's all going to be fiber to the home. So it's going to be one gig up to one gig services, it's going to be 500 up speed. You know, so you got one gig or 1,000 megabits coming down, 500 going up. So it's going to be high quality, high speed internet. It's certainly going to be able to get all of our other products that Charter sells through video, through home phone, through cell phone services and so on. So it's going to be high quality, it's not going to be a wire off over the air, it's a hardline fiber to the home service. So what we're doing is we're in the process of putting together an application in which Charter is going to pay a good portion of that 85,000 or $85 million and then we're asking for an NTIA grant to offset that. Now, I mentioned earlier that the program is a federal program with $288 million. We know $288 million is a lot of money, but when you look at it across the country, it may not be all that large. So we're we're going to go after this grant, we're hopeful to get this grant, but if we don't, we are still very hopeful and optimistic because there are other grant opportunities out there. And we have had conversations with Mr. Mooton to talk about as we're gathering this information, what this is is gives us a basis to go after additional grants. In North Carolina, they have the North Carolina Great Grant. If you guys are familiar with that in the past, it's a way that they could help offset some of the costs to build out there. This year, they are taking a lot of their ARBA funds to add to the Great Grant. If I'm hearing, it's anywhere from 350 to 400 million dollars. So that's even larger than what NTIA is all by itself across the country to be put into the state of North Carolina. We are looking forward to the opportunity to go for that grant to get to those other red dot areas to expand the service as well. So that is one opportunity. The way I believe this, where we stand with the Great Grant, if I understand it right, is that it's going to be part of the budget. And if the budget comes out.
Later.
This month, next next month in September, then if it gets signed by the governor or however they do it, but once they get it passed, then we'll go to North Carolina Broadband Infrastructure Office to write the rules of how it goes out. So we're anticipating mid to late fall before we find out what the rules are going to be and then we'll be putting our Great Grant together as well, unless we've already won it because we've won the NTIA. But we're not trying to put all of our eggs in one basket. We're trying to look at opportunities. So that is something that we're going to be aggressively going after. We know that there are funds out there that we could work with you on to do some of these areas, either through a program like we're talking about or something a little more creative. And we're open to any kind of conversations for that. And then again, county funded projects. So that's kind of what I wanted, I wanted to talk to you about in a nutshell this evening, but I am hoping for questions to to see how we can talk about. So ultimately, what we're saying is, once we go through the grant program for the second half of the red dots on top of the ARDOF, we're in essence saying, we're going to build broadband to most, if not every one of the residents in McDowell County.
That's going to be my question. So the combination of the ARDOF, the NTIA and the North Carolina Great Grant, you you think that we can get this to every home in McDowell County is what you're saying?
Yes.
Broadband?
Yeah. That is our full intent. Now, there may be a hunting shack up in the mountains and some of those type of very remote locations that may not, but most of, I'm going to say, if not 100%, we're going to be in the very high 90s of covering the homes in McDowell County with broadband service. And when I'm talking about broadband service, I'm talking about up to a gig or more. And then I know earlier you were talking about your economic development. As we are doing this, we will be able to expand our broadband and since we'll have the network across the entire county, we'll be able to provide commercial services as well. And that can be really at whatever level service they need of how many gigs or direct fiber feeds and so on to meet whatever their needs might be.
When is the grant due?
I'm sorry, what?
When is the grant due?
The grant is, has to be submitted by the 17th. So we have about a week and a half to get it done and we will have it done.
I mean. That responsible for that is you or us?
We are putting it together and we are going to have a package. I am supposed to have it, fingers crossed, tomorrow that I can hand it off to Mr. Mooton and I know that the ISO Thermo Cog is helping him do the application process as well. So it has to be submitted by the 17th and it will be submitted by the 17th. Come on, now we're high water.
I live in an area of the county that's covered by Morris broadband. Are you saying that Charter's going to be able to help them out or is that a separate amendment?
We're talking about Fords and Chevys. That's their area. We are not, that would be one of those areas that since Morris provides service and they meet that federal definition, they would have been excluded in the areas that we're looking. We are not looking to go over and what we call overbuild them to compete with them. We are looking to provide service only to the unserved areas.
Okay, so in other words, it'd still be areas in the county that could be without internet, so it would be covering the entire county?
Um, I don't think so.
Did Morris get bought out by, what's this company, Morris got bought out by?
I'm sorry.
Morris broadband just got bought out recently.
Thank you.
By, because I got service with a new provider and I can't think of.
Alties?
Alties.
Alties? Okay. Quite possibly, I.
Because Charter wouldn't come to where I live that, my residence, and Morris did and then so I waited and Morris sold out the Alties and then I jumped in and got it just installed last week.
I'll have to admit that a year or two ago, we were not nearly as aggressive in going after the rural areas, but now we are.
We're glad. We, we as commissioners, one of the biggest things that we hear is not having internet capacity. And when I say capacity, the the gig amount, so you get not just a bare minimum, but enough to do what you need to do.
Right. And it's certainly made clear in the, through COVID, through distance learning, telemedicine, working from home, just social interactions and and streaming services, we fully understand that. And I think that's part of the reasons we are being as as aggressive as we are in going after it. And even getting back to that one article that I mentioned earlier by US News and World Report, talked about Spectrum being the best rural broadband provider. Two years ago, that probably wouldn't have been the case, but now it is.
So let me, let me be clear on what you're saying here tonight again, and I hate to make you keep re- quote yourself, but on the areas that are not only provided for by either Charter or Morris or Neptun or whatever, you will be getting in those areas?
Yes, that is our full intent, either through ARDOF, which has already been awarded and that we're working diligently right now to move forward, or in those other unserved areas. And I think the way that you're kind of doing it, we refer to that as unserved areas. So those people that are in unserved areas, if they're not in ARDOF area and they're unserved, we're intending to go after them through the NTIA grant that we're getting ready to file the application for the 17th. Or if we are unsuccessful that way, there are going to be other grants such as the Great Grant. We also know that if we've been, if you've been watching the news, that Congress is looking to pass the new infrastructure bill that hopefully they're going to get pushed through, that there is a lot of money going that way too.
Lots of money.
So there is going to be other opportunities, more than just what I had put up on the screen. So we are closely watching that to make sure that we can find the right mechanism to get all this stuff done.
So the takeaway for people that have watched tonight's meeting and is this that through the ARDOF and hopefully NTIA and the North Carolina Great Grant, if you don't have broadband, it's coming to you, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We are working to do that.
Yes.
That sounds great. That sounds great. That I'm sure will please a lot of people, including myself.
Yeah. Well, in the packet, you also have my card, so feel free to give me a call, send me a note or whatever if you have any questions. I know Mr. Mooton knows how to get hold of me because we've been talking quite a bit, but we are anxious and looking forward to working with you on all these projects.
Thank you, Mr. Drank, be everybody's.
Thank you.
Before you move on, there's no action needed, Mr. Ballen's question. I have been in touch with the the new government affairs contact for Alties, what was Morris, and he would like to come to give an update on the Great Grant. They've been working on it for about a year and a half, maybe next month, the future meeting, so.
This would include the red areas that he's talking about for his specific area?
Right, where there's no overlap. So he, I think that's around 300 homes.
I think that's a good.
Next thing?
Yeah.
The next item, the next item of the flip session, we got moved it down to the below citizen comments, so we will be moving now into whole business. Item A under whole business will be the American Rescue Plan discussion this week.
Yes, sir, I'll go ahead and just give you an update, scroll down. And so just wanted to just maybe remind you of some of the discussion you had on the American Rescue Plan. There have been no funds that have passed out of our hands into someone else's yet, pardon the expression, but there have been several items that you have indicated that you would like to allocate towards American Rescue Plan funds. So just as a reminder for tonight, we have issued an RFQ for waterline design for expansion of the water system that has gone out. We have those back in about two and a half weeks and have been inundated with engineers that are interested in that work, asking questions and so forth. So that's one. Last month, we authorized the formal bidding of a short waterline extension on Stacy Hill Road. You'll recall that was a project that was almost completed about three years ago. Had a little bit of a shortage on funds there at the end, so this would make that connection complete. Also had some authorization on engineering for the louder structures, we call it, for stormwater improvements. That's in sort of a holding pattern right now, but those three have been at least authorized to move forward to next steps. Don't have costs on any of those items as of yet. Also, we had talked about prior meeting about utilizing ARBA funds for for staffing support. We have some departments that due to COVID, we have lost staffing support from, it's the Division of Correction now. We talked about that, I believe, about three weeks ago in greater detail. And that primarily is in the public services area at our solid waste facilities. You directed at that point that I speak with the sheriff about maybe some staffing support that could be provided by inmates in his custody. I did have that conversation and while it was a very positive conversation, of course, with the sheriff, it's not looking very likely as far as that being a possibility due to the very, very small amount of inmates that we have that are post-conviction. Most of the inmates we have are pre-conviction or pre-trial, should say, and so they are not eligible for for labor essentially. So that's honestly not an option for us at this point. And so staff would ask you to maybe consider utilizing funds since this is a COVID-induced issue to support staffing and public service.
Mr. Mooton, we talked today and about the possibility of talking to Arwin and I know the men's, there's requirements on the individuals who stay at the the men's shelter and they've got to be out there today being active, doing something. You know, that might give them opportunity for employment, being non-benefited, but they would have income potential and that's a resource for me to talk to her and to see if there's possibility because there's, I don't know if the given number of men are there any given day, but I'm sure it's more than 10 and that might be, how many do you need to sit, five at the landfill?
There's five slots. We talked about maybe having more opportunity, maybe having 10 essentially part-time staffers.
It's just a suggestion. I mean, it's, if you do that, hire staff.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea. Of our funds, is that the 100, 5, 6,000 we discussed?
Boy, that was, yes, sir. And that would get us through June 30th. If the staffing is not returned from the Division of Corrections, we would need a budget from the general fund or the waste fund, depending on where it is.
Which is already negative, beginning with current.
Right. Talk about that later. We would ask that for no more than maybe that amount Mr. Ellis mentioned.
I would make a motion that we pursue talking with Arwen to determine if that's feasible and authorize two months' worth of funding. That gives you time to talk to her and see what's available out of the fund you just referenced. To see if we can provide an income to people who need it, and at the same time, save the county money by having non-benefit positions. That's my motion.
Second. Motion second, in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. The other item that's on here, as far as maybe, I believe it was tabled last month, there was a discussion about premium pay, and that is how the U.S. Treasury Department labels it, essentially a COVID bonus or hazard pay or other terms for it. So that was tabled. As I mentioned last month and prior month, you are allowed to provide, I'll call it hazard pay, to frontline essential workers that are either going backwards towards March 2020 or current date that are frontline essential. And there's definition in the guidance for that, so it's not everybody and have to be certain folks. Didn't know if there was any, if there was any desire to do that or other ideas you might have at this point with the funding.
Do you have another idea?
So I want to just bring for discussion to the board with Mr. Keller's information earlier about the increase of COVID cases. We have roughly 500 county employees, is that correct, Mr. Wood?
Including full and part-time, Mr. Wood.
Okay. I think that it might be an incentive to offer vaccinated employees a $500 incentive and to go ahead and get vaccinated, number one. And number two, and have, give them time to do that up through October 1. And that would include anybody who has already been vaccinated and anybody who has not that would want that after they consult, as Mr. Keller said, whether doctor, physician, et cetera. And then also, since this is money that is coming from this federal grant, I would also, I know that several private companies have for their employees who get vaccinated, they are offering a draw. And I know one company in particular is doing, and it's a small employer of about 60 people, but they're doing a drawing at $2,500 in October for whoever's been vaccinated, put the name in a hat, draw it out just as another means of incentive, giving them an incentive to go ahead and get the vaccine. Because, Mr. Keller, I didn't know whether to bring it up then or now, but with the numbers on the increase, what's going to be the way to curb this whole situation? Just vaccinations, basically?
Absolutely, vaccines are our way out of this.
Okay. So I think that that might be an option that I would throw out on the table for discussion. And that would be taking non-budgeted money through this, which is allowable, and to speak to the, is that allowable with the American Rescue money?
It is. After our conversation earlier today, I did re-verify that it is allowable. It's in proportion, and there's no definition to what in proportion means, but it's not an unreasonable amount.
And this, what you're talking about, would retroactively pay $500 to all those that have already had the shot?
Yes.
And then to the.
But this is like a bonus for all county employees. This is not essential workers.
Well.
Because there's two, those are two separate things.
Yeah. I'm addressing just the bonus to get the shot, is what I'm doing.
You're addressing all employees?
Mm-hmm.
All employees.
Oh, yeah.
$500 if they.
All county employees.
Are completely vaccinated. Not just one shot and I'm done. Completely vaccinated. Yeah, I like that.
Well, that'd be the recommendation, William, that they need to have both shots to be really truly effective, correct?
Well, if they take the Moderna or the Pfizer, it's two shots.
Correct.
If it's Johnson, Johnson's just one, that's still considered complete, correct?
That is correct. I like the idea.
My personal opinion, 500 is a little steep. I think the essential workers would, I would be more open to that kind of figure, but I mean, people, on a personal basis, I feel like I would bury my parents in the last two weeks. They did get their vaccines, they did get COVID, they are getting better, and my dad was a retired doctor for 46 years here in this county, and it is a, it's a freedom of if you want it, get it, if you don't want it, then you're going to possibly die. And it's, people have that freedom, and I mean, I think that, I do agree that I wish people would be a little smarter. I do think that the FDA is going to be approving the vaccinations, it's my understanding, in September.
Is that what you're saying?
No, approving the drug itself, approving the vaccine itself. And I, it's, you know, I just have, I do think that we do, I would like to say thank you to the workers that have had to go out and do things. I do think that it would be beneficial too, to have a little bit of a bonus, 500 is pretty steep, in my, in my, just want to get to.
You want to be nice enough to really attract them to go get it though, that's why.
I'd like to know as far as saying thank you to everyone that has had the shot. Thank you for doing that.
I'll make a motion to address the one component here, just to move on. I'll make a motion to give $500 to all fully vaccinated employees, and as Commissioner Ballen did note, that would be both shots for the Moderna and Pfizer, and one shot for Johnson Johnson. And put a, I'll just leave it at that, I'll just put it at that. That's my motion.
Get my mind clear, you're saying the ones that have already been vaccinated and the ones that will.
And give a deadline of October 1st, that would give time for both shots, Mr. Keller? Would that, would that give time for both shots if we set this good through October 1st for people to get shots?
Moderna is the one that requires 28-day waiting period, and it's the longest waiting
I'll second his motion.
So as a point of clarification, so employed as of today.
Correct.
Through October 1st, they've been vaccinated going back to whenever, December, I guess. And then the drawing, how many was that?
I'm going to leave that off. I think, I think that.
Okay.
I didn't include that.
This, what I'm saying, written, this is just the 500 retro to the, all those that have had it, and then 500 to all those that will get it.
By October 1st.
Is it okay if I turn and look at the finance director, anything else, I mean, other than we've got to figure out how to do it?
And make sure, for clarity purposes, that is out of the American Rescue relief funds.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Got a motion second, any other discussion?
Yes, I'd like to say we are four people in this county, 46,000. I do think that our county employees are critical to our operation, but I just want to leave before we vote, what about the other people in the county? Let's vote.
We're always open for suggestions for, you know.
I understand, we don't, we can't have, we can't be giving things just specifically to our employees, that we are voted in by the, by everybody in this county. And I just wanted, I just want to make a statement, and that's it.
Isn't there some of the other businesses or industries that are doing similar to this?
Not all, mine's not.
Yours not, okay. Let's vote. Okay, motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Wood, next on the agenda is the public shooting range.
Yes, sir, you have the monthly report from Mr. Bailey, the engineer for NC Wildlife, and your report. You also have a change order request. This is something that we talked about before the project started. If you recall, maybe about a year ago, in order to put in the bridge, there's an impact to the flood level of that flood control dam. So we are removing soil elsewhere on the project site in order to mitigate any impact to the flood storage capacity. And so England Builders has provided, the change order information, our part will be 10% of this, and it is covered under the prior approval you made last month financially, so. Just ask to approve.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the change order with county share being $8,830 and 30 cents.
Second, motion second, in discussion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you. I will add just very quickly, Mr. Marsh will be back probably within the next month or two to talk about operating hours and those sorts of things for you all to decide what days you'd like to be open hours and things, so for that future months.
Good deal. Next on the agenda is the building projects update, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir, just a quick update. The administrative offices on Main Street continue, if you drive by, especially on the backside of the building, if you're on 4th Street, you will see evidence of work. I will be touring the building Wednesday morning, and at that point or any other point you'd like to go in and see it, just let us know and get you in and make sure they don't run you off. That is still scheduled for the upper floor, being scheduled for early 22, hopefully January, then the lower level is scheduled for spring or maybe April. For emergency services headquarters, I've mentioned to you several times that we've had materials being delayed, lots of issues with the contractors, with pricing, but the project still continues. It's looking closer to completion every day. You do have in your packet, and Mr. Keller, I believe, passed out several pamphlets and flyers that are being distributed for sponsorship opportunities and memorial bricks. And so if you happen to have a personal interest, of course, or if you know anyone that might, he will gladly help you in that regard. That's all I have inside.
Questions, comments on that?
Mr. Chairman, I say, I arrived by the building Saturday, and the new EMS headquarters is looking great, and that's, it's going to be something that we all, everybody in the county will be proud of, and it's going to increase the response time to save more lives.
Okay, good. You have a building project update?
Yes, sir.
Next on the agenda is solid waste update.
Yes, sir, there's a couple of items here, operation, and we'll talk about the other later. If you'll recall, last month, it was right after the 4th of July holiday, we were closed on July 5th, and we had two sites that had essentially illegal dumping happen where bags were deposited in front of the gate, inside the gate, et cetera. Some of the feedback we heard from the board, and honestly, the public, was we didn't know you guys were going to be closed, and so we put out messages in the newspaper and the radio, there's always maybe room for improvement. So we did go on the county website, the county website has every site listed as far as the 911 address, the phone number, and the typical operating hours, wasn't on there before that's been done. A lot of people use Google, and so they have Google Maps, and you can search for convenience centers, trash dump, or whatever you want to call it. We had, I think, maybe one or two represented in the county, they were not maintained by the county, and so we have initiated to where we own those listings, so make sure the regular operating hours are posted, phone numbers and others. That also allows us, when there's a holiday closing coming up, Christmas or whatever, to adjust those hours in that listing. A lot of people use those, for instance, we control whatever the Board of Elections listing, and about 1,000 people a month look at it. So there's evidence that people look at these things, so that's one of the things we're taking care of. On the more practical side, you discussed being open on county-recognized holidays. The next holiday where there would be a closure would be Labor Day, that's on Monday, of course. After that, the next day that would typically be closed, where we'd otherwise be open is the day after Thanksgiving and the day after Christmas. The day after Christmas this year on the calendar is Sunday, and so typically, we're always open both the Friday after Thanksgiving and the day after Christmas, which county offices will be closed on that Monday, but the solid waste sites will be open. So really, the only holiday between now and New Year's where we would be closed that might be subject to discussion is Labor Day. So we wanted to, we ran the numbers, it's about $5,000 in additional cost to be open that day, holiday pay and things. If you wanted us to be open to where staff would otherwise be, we can be, make that change for that day, and that's going to be the only holiday at this point where there would be an adjustment, if there was interest. If you wanted, that's coming up pretty close.
Did you say anything about being posted at the sites themselves?
We do, we put a flyer, it could be bigger, but it's a letter size, this is page 75 on each dumpster that has the closings, and we can make that bigger signage. We are speaking with local vendors on new permanent signage, but also where we put out holiday signs, banners or whatever to get people's attention.
Like on the gate when it's closed.
That's right.
And you may have addressed this, and I might have been re-occupied, but what about the feasibility study on adding another day?
So right now, again, we're open four days a week at six of the sites, six days in one site. We looked at opening Tuesday and Thursday at all the sites, so all seven being open six days a week, Monday through Saturday. To do that, it's about a $70,000 to $80,000 cost for that staffing, and that's just the staffing cost. One of the unknowns, we really wouldn't know until we get into it, about running some sort of model. We tend to hit the schools and other sites that we service more so on Tuesday and Thursdays, so there is an operational uncertainty if we're open six days a week on making sure we're serving the convenience sites and the schools and not having Mr. Tranks or someone else calling about containers being filled. So a theory is that if all six were open six days a week, it would spread out the waste across every, you know, those days and not concentrate, you know, a lot of waste in a Monday or a Wednesday or a Friday or Saturday in those sites, it might, might spread it out, but we don't have $70,000 or $80,000. But we don't have $70,000 or $80,000 budget at this point.
Well, I think it's.
At least we know.
You know, I like the thought of looking at that and doing that, and I respect that. We can take another look at it in the future in a different time. I do hope that people realize the expense of their solid waste. Certainly down here, it really costs the county a lot of money. It's a sort of a never-ending money pit that we keep sticking money in, that there is certainly no return on, but it's something that it's good for the county, and we sort of want to maintain it as long as we can. Any other questions, comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we talked to staff to have them bring back suggestions or recommendations for how we can cut into the loss that happens yearly down at the solid waste site, and I think that that's something you just can't do overnight, personally. Mr. Wood, you speak more to that, but I would like to give them a set time to go ahead and look, say, three months, and bring us back some solid recommendations, like one, two, three, here's ways we can cut into that deficit that we're incurring every year, and then we got a letter from the state on stating we need to get in line. And I think specific recommendations, I appreciate staff putting in the general statutes that govern the fact that we can't do things, but I would like to hear specific recommendations to how we might address that as a board moving forward. And give you three months, so we're in August, November meeting?
To address the open issue as far as holidays, I think that I'd like to instruct staff to go ahead and get some signage to put on the gates.
Is there a motion? I'm saying.
To get signage larger than, or get signs to list the holidays that we are down, so that, I mean, New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Labor Day, 4th of July, you know, that's going to be, and then, so it's just clear, and I do appreciate the efforts in updating the McDowell County site too, but I do think the more communication, the better.
Okay, we've got a motion to second on that in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Anya votes? Okay.
The three-month item, is that a consensus for us?
I'll put in motion.
I'll second. Okay, we've got a motion to second on that in discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anya votes? Okay. Next, under I L E, is the opioid lawsuit update, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir, so I'll mention, so everyone in the room understands, I'll do an update in open session here in a second. There'll also be a discussion in a closed session towards the end of the meeting, that we have to reference what that's about, it'll be about opioid lawsuits as well. I will say, in open session, it's been very much in the news that the multi-district litigation is hopefully heading towards a resolution. Settlement has been announced several weeks ago, been in all the press, and so, Mr. Coates is here, and we'll talk again in a closed session about that, but we were reviewing documents, he is, and he and I are speaking about it. And we have some time, we have, honestly, until maybe December to consider the master's settlement agreement, so we have time on that regard. In regards to the memorandum of understanding or agreement that presented to you several months ago from the Virgin Line Association of County Commissioners, we're not ready to have that approved yet, but we'll revisit that later, and I'll also address that in closed session. But just wanted to make sure we are paying attention to it, and we'll be talking about it heavily in the next few months. I do have an action item, I mentioned this in an email to you, related to the settlement. We feel very strongly that it will come sooner or later, and if you'll recall and believe it was March, Mr. Danny Hampton spoke to you, and you endorsed the process of working with the Substance Use Coalition on a cooperative process to identify, you know, ways and means that those funds could be spent. Dogwood Health has put out an RFP for a grant that would have a facilitated process that would, you know, my guess is pay someone to come in and look at what we have in place with the Substance Use Coalition, county operations, et cetera, and work with us and partners like Danny and others to identify sort of a process and infrastructure to where we're not sitting here months on end trying to figure out how to spend money to benefit this community in this area. It would give a process to where, yes, you're blessing, approving, but you're not spinning your wheels on it. So, I'd like to ask your authority to submit that grant to Dogwood Health.
Make a motion, we submit your name to Dogwood.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anya votes?
Thank you.
Good, thank you. All right. Next, in new business, we'll go to administrative items, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir, we have a few of these items. The first one, gosh, I guess about a year ago, we received a trailer, it was formerly owned by Ingalls, it's a refrigerated trailer. We have not utilized it as a community as maybe we best could, there's some needed repairs on it. Henderson County has learned about the trailer and has an interest in it, and would find it to be a good home for us, we're asking that you approve resolution, authorizing its transfer.
My question will approve that.
Second, motion second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anya votes?
In the budget you passed several months ago now, or I guess, yeah, last month, you authorized the purchase of several vehicles. There's a Mack waste truck, one Ford Transit van, and two Ford Escapes. Term is for four years at 1.27% for the total financing cost of $236,944.78. Ask that you approve the resolution?
What's the pleasure board say?
Second. Patrick, make me to the question.
Okay, in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anya votes?
We have a project budget ordinance for triple loft design building we're used that Mr. Abernathy mentioned earlier.
Mr. Chairman, I would like, we're destined to be recused for voting on this here again. I didn't vote on the first go around due to.
I think that's a different.
Is that a different one? Okay, I'll vote on this one now, I'm making a motion, we approve it right now.
No conflict.
Second. Motion to second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anya votes? Okay.
The last I have are two new water system leak adjustments, 319 and 4745.
Make a motion to approve the adjustments as of this.
Motion to second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anya votes? Next, on new business, we've got the salary study proposal, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir, thank you. Prior meeting, you directed that staff receive proposals on performing a comprehensive classification and pay study for the county. We put that out in early July, and they came back on July 28th. We received three proposals, one's $10,000 higher than the other, and we saw no, Maria and I saw no justification to recommend that higher cost. Two proposals that we did receive at $32,000 of cost are from Piedmont Triad Council of Governments and the MAPS Group, and you have copies of this in here. And honestly, Maria and I and Ms. Bell looked at both of them and saw no clear-cut winner that one was more qualified than the other, they both done, you know, regional groups, local groups even, and so, we went ahead and scheduled essentially an interview with both, I believe on the 19th, to maybe get a better feeling than what we can see on paper of who's best fit for McDowell County. So, I guess two ways to maybe handle this, if you wanted us to, if you wanted to authorize moving forward with one of them at that cost, because the cost is fixed, we can do that and allow staff to pick the most qualified based on the interviews, or if you wanted us to still make a selection and bring it back to you at the September meeting to formally have them maybe speak and talk about the process at that point. It's almost the same thing, but whatever your preference is.
Well, it would be my thought, but you go ahead and interview these, come back to us, and then give us a recommendation.
Okay.
It would be my thought.
Make a motion, we have staff do, as Chairman just stated.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next question?
Oh, one question, real quick, the $32,000, now that's new money, so where is that money coming from to pay for the study? I'm all for the study, but where's it coming from?
The courthouse project, capital project is essentially ready to be closed out, and staff recommend some of the balance of that project go towards the cost.
Okay, what's the total balance in the courthouse project?
There's about 66,000 remaining.
Okay.
And that happens sometimes where we, you know, think we might get another change order that comes in, and so, you know, funds are allocated to a project and then.
That's a good thing there was a deposit in that.
It is.
Very good, but, and I would follow up, I've got an issue with that, but I would follow up with this, a lot of times, there's so many numbers, you know, you and I are working it daily, and as commissioners, we do our duties and look and read all the documents. I would like to see, moving forward, that any amount in a project budget ordinance that is to the positive, and I know that we approve anything over $3,000, the board's notified that here's the $X amount left over.
I agree.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second, got a motion to second, any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anya votes? Okay, next on the agenda, Mr. Wood, tax matters?
Tax matters are routine, ask that you approve them.
Make a motion to approve tax matters, as presented?
Second. Motion to second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anya votes? Next, Mr. Wood, we've got board appointments, and I think Madam Clerk will take care of that, and we.
Yes, you have one vacancy on the playing board, and you have your ballot sheets in front of you. I'll send you a mark. We have four applications from Kim Coff, I believe is the penitentiary section, Alex Portelli, Marty Randall, and Megan Webster. The vote is two votes for Alex Portelli and three votes for Marty Randall, so I'll be notifying Mr. Randall's appointment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now it's time for citizen comments, if you're here as a citizen and wish to speak, you'll need to sign up. All right, that does it for citizen comments. Next on the agenda is a closed session meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, go in closed session.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion to second to go with the closed session, so NCTS 143-318-11830.
This is the opioid lawsuit we talked about in the case.
All in favor going into closed session, say aye. We're in the commission staff and reports of communications, so if you'd like to bring her up.
Yes, sir, just quickly, I'd like to, I guess, preview the following meeting, and so, September, we will have Mr. Whelan Prebor from the Senior Center here to talk about housing rehabilitation program for seniors and actually others, and some of the other good things going on there at the Senior Center. Mr. Hollifield, Transit Director, will be back for a public hearing. We will have the pay study company here to talk about what they would do for approval, and potentially that Altis slash Morris broadband update on the great grant, so full agenda already. But if you would allow me, I would like to also introduce, and I'm not supposed to say intern, I'm supposed to say AmeriCorps member, an AmeriCorps member that we are hosting through AmeriCorps in UNC Chapel Hill, Ms. Maeva Hasani, she's a graduate of Western Carolina, which is, is a great school, is an App State grad, I will admit that, so a recent graduate.
Go guess.
But Maeva has been with us, today has been a week, and she's already been to, she went to a meeting with the Tourism Development Authority with me on day one, we met with Mr. Danny Hampton on Friday, in between, we worked on the broadband grant Mr. Tank talked about, so she will get a lot of work done, very sharp, and look forward to a lot of good things, and eventually she will be, I'm sure, presenting something to you, a report she's working on, potentially a solid waste, a big report, so.
Most would like to welcome you aboard, and if you will, come up and propose, and briefly introduce yourself and tell us, tell us just a little bit about yourself, you will.
All right, um, well, like you said, I went to the basketball of the, you know, Carolina's App State. Uh, but anyway, so I graduated from Western Carolina in May of 2021, and so, kind of, after I was kind of trying to figure out what I was going to do, I want to go to law school eventually, and I knew that I wanted to take a year off and kind of expand my knowledge and just learn more about things I had known nothing about. So, I applied for a program, it's called LEAP North Carolina, three years at Chapel, just like you said, and basically just working with the local government for a year, learning about things I don't know about. I live in Forest City, so just a county over, not too far. Um, I'm really excited, they're passionate about public service, so just excited to learn a lot, and just like, I guess.
Any questions?
Well, congratulations, we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
And we know you'll be an asset, and you'll work hard, and there'll be lots of fun things Mr. Wood will delegate to you, I'm sure, and if we can ever be of any help, let us know.
Yeah, thank you so much, it was nice to meet y'all.
Thank you. Well, okay.
And that's all I have, Mr. Wood.
Do I hear a motion, Mr. Wood?
Slow move.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.